Hi, it's Brandon from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, our goal as a family-owned company has been simple, to give our neighbors on the Cape Cod Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick the perfect appliances for your home. At Crane Appliance, we know how difficult appliance shopping can be. Our team is here for you. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape Cod Islands home.
Carlson Printing, 508-548-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@al.com. Carlson Printing, for all your printing needs. John's Liquor Store, 729 Main Street, Falmouth, 508-548-2287.
Good evening. I'd like to open the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is February 24th, 2025, at exactly 5:30. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Falmouth Southerly LLC, where discussion in an open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town of Falmouth, and Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, P-FAS Product Liability Class Action, where discussion in an open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor by roll call, please.
Zelinski, aye.
Brown, aye.
Goldstone, aye.
Goldstone, aye.
Taylor, aye. And I expect to return to open session at 6:30. Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. The Select Board is returning from executive session. It is Monday, February 24th, 2025. It is exactly 6:30. And as we get started, I'm going to ask you, please silence your cell phones and double-check that they are indeed silenced. And if you are making either an audio or video recording of this open meeting session, thank you, please notify me as chair. And the placement and operation of the recording equipment should not interfere with the conduct of this meeting. And I would ask you to please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any recognitions from the board?
Nothing special this week.
Nope. Okay. Any announcements from members of the board for the good of the public? Ms. Goldstone?
As Black History Month draws to a close, we've got a few more events this week. There's a free author talk, Slavery and Abolition on Cape Cod, at Hyde Field Hall and Gardens at 5:30 on Thursday. And then on Friday at 5 o'clock down at MBL in Woods Hole is the Community Harambee Celebration. Again, that's free and open to the public. And then I also wanted to note two other upcoming events. Farming Falmouth is going to be screening a movie, Food and Country, this Friday evening. And on Saturday, at the Mashpee Middle High School, there's going to be a talk on the rights of nature. And knowing that we adopted a rights of nature declaration last year, an opportunity to learn a little bit more about that.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other announcements from board members? Mr. Brown?
I have on my calendar that there's a meeting at Mass Military Civilian Community Council Meeting, February 26th, at 5:30, at the Welcome Center Building. And I believe that's to talk about the composting possibility.
It's on the agenda, yes.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Any other announcements? Public comment, is there anyone here for public comment? Okay? Public comment may be made on routine matters, not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. And since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board will not participate in any discussion or debate of your topic. Please.
Thank you. My name's Catherine Jansen. I'm the Chair of the Falmouth Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. I'm also on the Board of Friends of Falmouth Bike Ways and on the Advisory Board for Vision Zero Cape Cod. I offer you a small selection of hits. July 22nd, an 18-year-old running on the Starining Sea Bike Way, hit in the crosswalk on Locust Street. August 1st, 2023, a Main Street couple after their dinner at a Main Street restaurant, hit in the crosswalk going to their parked car. September 3rd, a pedestrian in the crosswalk at Minot, almost hit by a motorcycle grazed. The guy wasn't hit, simply because the motorcyclist chose to lay the motorcycle down and take the hit themselves. December 20th, Main Street, in the crosswalk at Post Office Road, pedestrian hit. And on January 12th of this year, a 73-year-old man was hit and killed on Dillingham and Gifford, in the crosswalk. Our town needs to protect vulnerable road users, because humans will always lose in car versus human. So far, our town has resisted things like speed tables due to cost, worries about plowing, concerns about them becoming widespread, the speed tables. But I ask, what is the cost of a life? And what is the cost to our town once we get a reputation of not being safe for walking, walking around downtown? It's not the sole responsibility of DPW. I have tremendous respect for Mr. McConerty, his team, and DPW. But it is not their sole responsibility. It is part of a strategic plan for public safety in this town. And furthermore, they need significant funding to do this, instead of one by one, different intersections being identified, then you've got to scramble for funding, then you've got to put it all together. So I'm asking the Select Board to act on public safety, starting with your strategic planning process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay. We are a little bit early, so I am going to skip over to the consent agenda. And I will read through the consent agenda, and if there's any item that needs to be held, please notify me as the chair. Okay. Administrative orders. Consider a vote to approve the petition of NSTAR Electric Company Doing Business as EverSource Energy and Verizon New England Inc. for permission to install one new JO pole on Turhue and Drive, to be labeled 570-45, approximately 80 feet west of an existing pole, 574. This pole location is necessary for a new underground cable line from the EverSource Station 933. Consider a vote to approve the petition of NSTAR Electric Company Doing Business as EverSource to install along Red Wing Terrace, two new manholes, 10014-035 and 10114-045. The installation of two new manholes is to address the faulted section of direct buried cable along Pebble Lane and Red Wing Terrace, and install fault indicators. Consider a vote to approve the petition of NSTAR Electric Company Doing Business as EverSource Energy to install on Pebble Lane, two new manholes, 10014055 and 10114-065. The installation of the two new manholes is to address the faulted section of direct buried cable and install fault indicators. Consider a vote to accept a donation in the amount of $500 from Joan Tiedwell to the Cultural Council Donation Account for Music at the Table, with our thanks and appreciation. Consider a vote to accept the amendment to a water easement and drainage easement of 64 Technology Park, from Falmouth EDIC.
Hold.
Thank you, Mr. Muscally. Consider a vote to opt-in to early voting in person for the May 20th Annual Town Election. Okay? And our last, consider a vote to approve the solar rooftop lease with Select Energy Development LLC for the water treatment plan, 650 Gifford Street.
Madam Chair, staff is requesting the Select Board hold that on. We have some more work to do. We'll bring that back on a future agenda.
Okay, so you're asking us to take that off the consent agenda?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, A through D.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. I'm going to go to F. Consider a vote to opt-in early voting in person for May 20th Annual Election. Motion?
Move approval.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, E. Mr. Muscally?
Just that I need to abstain from this matter, as I'm a member of the EDIC.
Okay, so we can move to approve, if I could have a motion?
Madam Chair, move to approve item E on the consent agenda with Mr. Muscally's abstention.
I'll second that.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Thank you. All right. And we are still early, so let's look at review and vote minutes to approve the minutes of the public session. October 25th, 2021, Doug, you're all over this one.
You and I get...
This is it, my friend.
You don't have to vote it, right?
You and I do, that's it.
Yeah, I think it was in order.
I thought it was okay as well.
Let's just slip through the cracks.
So would you make a motion, sir?
I would move approval of the minutes of October 25th, 2021.
Okay, and I will need to second that motion. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed or abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain, thank you. Two approvals and three abstentions.
Can we do Tom Edith's report?
No, I'd rather do number four.
We'll do it later, number four, yeah.
Would you like to do number...
Number four.
I'll probably can do number four.
Okay, let's look at number four. I'm sorry, I'm all over the place. We're taking these out of order, but because we have published a public hearing, you have to do it by time.
Do we want to do the Feb. 10 meeting?
Oh, I thought we did, okay.
February 10.
You guys distracted me.
I also...
All right, go ahead.
I thought those were in order as well, unless anybody has comments.
Okay.
I would move approval unless there's any other edits.
There were a number of minor capitalization issues that could be reviewed in those minutes, but I would second a motion to approve the minutes.
Will you send those edits forward?
I can do that, yes.
Ms. Goldstone, that would be great. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the February 10, 2025 minutes with some edits provided by Ms. Goldstone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously, thank you. All right, we're still a little bit ahead, so we're going to look at number four.
Yes, ma'am.
Discuss and consider the approval of a letter to the Cape Cod Commission concerning a conservation restriction for 41, 59, and 48 Theater Drive and 0 Boxberry Hill Road. Attorney O'Keefe, I think we're sending this one over to you.
Sorry, is this item four?
Yes.
Okay. So before you is a request from Pure Sky Solar, who has submitted another application to the Cape Cod Commission for the large-scale ground-mounted solar array that will be placed at the Cape Cod Country Club. So something that the Cape Cod Commission is very interested in hearing from this board is that their concerns about placing a conservation restriction have been heard, and that the Select Board is interested and is hopeful to be able to place a conservation restriction on the property. There was some testimony before the Cape Cod Commission, the last time that the applicant was before the CCC, that there were concerns about how the conservation restriction would be legally structured, because one of the visions for this property is to conserve part of the parcel under a conservation restriction, and then save another part of the parcel for possible municipal purposes, somewhere down the line after the decommissioning of the solar array. That would require a different kind of restriction for affordable housing. And usually what you do is you subdivide a lot in order to clearly place a restriction on one parcel, and then a different restriction on the other parcel. But if you try to subdivide this lot, it impacts the economic feasibility of the solar array, because then the different parcels have different setbacks. And that would mean taking some of the solar panels away from the project. Long story short, we figured out a way to put different restrictions on the parcel without having to subdivide it. It took some negotiation with the land court, but working with counsel for Pure Sky and with representatives from the land court, we figured out a way to do that. So the Cape Cod Commission is simply asking for a letter from this board showing that not just continued support for the project, but also acknowledging that the town has found a way forward to conserve the property, not just for affordable housing, but also for conservation purposes. So that's the purpose of the letter.
Questions from the board, Mr. Zelinski?
So does that de- or that order from this board, will that continue in perpetuity after the ground lease for the solar? Or does that end at the end of that ground lease and gets re-discussed or reworked?
The conservation restriction would be in perpetuity, and that was the real focus of the concern for the Cape Cod Commission. They want to make sure that the amount of acreage that is on the table right now to be conserved for conservation restriction will be secured in perpetuity. It's about 10 acres right now. It is possible that there could be an affordable housing restriction placed on the property, which could possibly be in perpetuity also, but that's still a negotiation. My recommendation would be just to hold the rest of the parcel for municipal purposes to allow the town to have more leeway with whatever the town wants to do with it in 30 years.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Questions from the board? I'm going to go to Ms. Goldstone, and then I'll come back to Mr. Brown.
Attorney O'Keefe, I'm wondering if you could just say a little bit more about the mechanism that you've worked out with the land court for actually accomplishing the conservation easement? Because while I fully agree that it's been the intention of this board to accomplish a conservation easement, I'll say I'm a little uncomfortable with sending a letter vouching for that without understanding what the mechanism for accomplishing that actually is, when, as you say, a lot of it is still under, the other specifics around the parcel are still under negotiation.
Sure. I mean, the part about figuring it out with the land court is settled. All that needs to be done is draw up the plans. And what the land court has agreed to accept is that we will have detailed plans delineating the areas of the various restrictions. So instead of officially parceling out the property into different deeded units, it will still remain as one deeded unit, or it will exist as it is with the existing parcels, with no further subdivision, and will just show very clear lines on a plan, and submit that for approval with the land court.
Mr. Brown?
So originally, I thought we had agreed that we wanted to delineate some areas for affordable housing, that we wouldn't wait for 30 years, it would be available, like the Ranch Road section. Can you refresh my memory about what was the outcome of that?
I don't know. We've really been struggling just to resolve this conservation restriction issue. My understanding is that we don't have specifics about the affordable housing yet, that that hasn't been determined with any certainty. It's still part of the conversation, and a vibrant part of the conversation, but we're focused on trying to figure out the 10-acre conservation parcel right now.
Okay. Because that was part of the developer's original pitch, was that there was ancillary land that was coming under their ownership that wasn't needed for the solar array, Ranch Road in particular.
It's still part of the conversation, absolutely, and an important part.
And that would be under Select Board jurisdiction as well, then?
Yes.
Okay. Because I got the feeling from the description that we're putting everything under conservation? I didn't really understand. So there's 10 acres that's going to be Select Board purview? Is that...
10 acres will be under a conservation restriction. And it's undetermined whether it will be under the Select Board jurisdiction, or under the Conservation Commission, or maybe the 300 Committee. We haven't gotten that far. Really, the point of this letter is that the Cape Cod Commission wants to know that the Select Board's on board for that 10-acre conservation restriction parcel. That's what they want to hear from the Select Board right now.
Right, but I don't really understand what I'm on board with, honestly.
That we're focused and amenable to conserving the 10 acres under a conservation restriction. This is the only question.
How many acres is there in total?
I don't. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
Mr. Muscally, did you have a question?
Just a couple of questions.
Yep, go ahead.
Or edits. And I did share these earlier with Attorney O'Keefe. First, I want to compliment her for working with the applicant and the Cape Cod Commission to make this happen. I just thought that in the first paragraph, where it says at the end, "and now offers additional details concerning the proposed conservation restrictions," I don't really see the details. I think we have a general indication of support, but again, it's just wordsmithing. But I don't think we're really offering any additional details. And then in the last sentence, towards the end, where it says, "The Select Board has been informed and wishes to convey that the town and the applicant are confident." And I'm not sure that we're in a position to say what the applicant is doing or saying. So I would modify that clause to say, "The Select Board has been informed and wishes to convey that the town, with the continued support or cooperation of the applicant, is confident that the proposed conservation goals can be achieved in a way that will benefit all."
I'm happy to make those changes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Goldstone?
Yeah, given the conversations we've had and the intention to conserve roughly 10 acres of the parcel, is there a reason we would not make that commitment in this letter, rather than saying that it is to, our intention is to conserve a portion of the land, as opposed to it is our intention to conserve roughly 10 acres of the land?
You'd like to put in the exact amount of the... I can do that, I just don't know what the number is right now.
I thought you just said it was 10 acres.
Approximately.
Right, that's right, yes.
I would get the actual number.
Yes, absolutely. Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Brown, did you have another?
No, I can't scroll fast enough to get to the letter, so...
Here, here. It took me a while, too.
It's a huge package.
It's what happens when we take things out of order.
Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Muscally?
Not today.
Okay, I think with the adjusted language, I'd be fine with it.
Okay, any further discussion? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I guess I would move approval of the letter with edits, as suggested by Mr. Muscally and Ms. Goldstone.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with the amendments. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can go to our public hearing. Mr. Zelinski, for the notice, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As provided under Chapter 119 of the Code of Falmouth, a public hearing will be held in the Select Board meeting in Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, February 24th, 2025, at 6:45 PM, to establish and promulgate fees, which are effective as of June 1st, 2025, to be charged by the town departments and agencies, except as provided by MGL, School Department, Planning Board, Library, Town Clerk, Town Treasurer, and Collector of Taxes. Proposed changes in fees are listed below, as posted. Nancy Robbins, Taylor Chair.
Okay, thank you for the notice. And I think we have our Recreation Director, Julie Williams-Tinkham, here to present.
You're coming up. I'm not doing this on... I don't know how to plug in. I don't... Do I have to plug in? What do you need from me?
Peter will help you.
Okay, thank you.
Don't need this.
Oh, I don't even need it. It was ready, though.
It's good.
I didn't know if anyone had...
So it is a PDF, because that's the only version I had. Use these arrows to go back and forth, not up and down, but right-left.
Okay, stop, I'll try my best. We'll start from the beginning, maybe?
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Thank you for having me. I don't know, is that what we're doing here?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
So the first presentation is increasing...
Whoa.
Am I that loud?
No, it's not you.
Always heard that I was loud. I'll try. Is why we need to increase our summer adventure program fees. So our summer adventure program has maintained the same fees since at least 2006. That's as far as back as the files that I could find. We did see in 2001, they were a little bit less, but we've maintained the same fees since at least 2006. But we do have rising operational costs, increasing participant needs, and we'd like to adjust our fees to make sure that we're offering quality program and better supporting our participants. So our current fee structure that we have is $75 a week. We do also charge $25 for extended stay per session. And then I added some other towns in here, too, so you could see what they charge. Mashpee, $185. Boys and Girls Club, $195 a week. YMCA, $382.50 a week. Some of them are about. The one that's closest to us is Brewster, which is about $130 a week. We do have increased, I don't know why it's...
Just scroll down a little bit.
Thank you. That's what I have Kevin for. So we do have increased costs, and this is just one example of a program that we've used since 2006. So our costs for Mad Science in 2006 was $275, and last summer it was $435. So that was a 58% increase, and we have increased our fees 0%. There's also increased staff costs. In 2009, the estimated average hourly wage for our summer employees was $10.26, and in 2025, the approximate is $18.81. Again, 86% increase. We also have an increasing social-emotional needs of students. This is data from DESI. So we see a trend over time of decreasing student population in town, but we have an increase in our adjustment counselors, which is great. I think it's really great that students are getting the support they need in schools, and we need to also provide that in our summer programs as well. There's a lot of data here, too, with ratios. So we have growing needs despite declining numbers in our town, and just like schools, our campers, our participants have growing social-emotional needs. So we would like to, or we will be adding a head counselor position. It's imperative to have for our programs. We have a lot of really great high school and college kids who come and are counselors for us, and it would be great to have head counselor positions. But addressing the needs and the challenges that we have mean we need more money, and I think one of the ways to do that is to increase our fees. So we're asking to increase the fees from $75 a week to $100 a week, which would still be less than any other of the communities that we've talked about.
So can we ask questions as you're going on?
Sure.
I have two. One, if a family, a Falmouth family cannot afford the increase or the price, is there a way that you offset that for kids?
Yes, absolutely. We do offer scholarships to each of the elementary schools. We offer a set number of scholarships to each school, and then if they ask for additional, they have additional families that have need, we will provide those. And we would continue to do that as well as families who come in and ask for...
And I know the getting in is competitive, because you have a lot of applications, and I'm wondering if Falmouth kids come first?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Muscally?
Well, your first question was one of the ones I wanted to ask, so thank you. But the second question is maybe for Peter or Mike. Where do these fees go when they're collected? Do they go into the town?
General fund.
General fund.
General fund.
So, I mean, how do we know that that's going to generate a new head counselor position, which I assume would be in the budget for next year?
It's in the budget. It is in the budget.
It's in the budget for this year? Okay.
And the increased fee wouldn't actually fully cover, we also asked for a 25% increase in our summer adventure program budget. This increase would not, would not fully cover that, those additional costs.
Ms. Goldstone?
Related to your last point, actually, and my first question was, are there scholarships? Given that there are scholarships or a mechanism to assist families for whom the cost is a barrier, given that you're looking at 50 to 85% cost increases to date and only asking for a 25% fee increase for a family that can afford $100 a week, they can probably afford $125 a week, why wouldn't you actually set that fee just a little bit higher to cover more of those costs, provide more leeway for the scholarships for the families who can't afford it at all?
That would be a great idea. I have heard historically, it's been, it's been a challenging conversation to have to increase fees. So we started in a place where we thought that we're still well below the other communities. So I love that you'd like us to ask for even more fees. This would be at least a start. We can reevaluate it.
Mr. Brown?
It's sort of a public service, and we do have a lot of families that are in need. And even though they might not want to declare it, it's still helpful.
Go ahead.
So this is my last slide. So just as far as our next steps for this, for this piece, would be communicate as early as we can any changes, be transparent about the funding, where the funds will go. And we are hoping that the new fees would be effective for summer 2025. And as you see, there's increasing numbers of scholarships access there.
Any other questions on this piece?
No, do we, are we going to vote them separately or all together? It would seem we might want to vote them separately.
Thank you.
I think we can vote them as one.
That's the way we have it listed, but we can certainly, if the Select Board's pleasure, separate them out into two separate votes.
Would you like to make a motion, Mr. Muscally?
Oh, I'd make a motion to, to increase the fees for the summer adventure program as presented.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Fantastic. So the next, oh boy, is there another one?
I think you may have advanced it too much because I think.
Is it summer adventure still?
It was the second one. I think the first one.
The adult slides were before the summer adventure in our packets.
The first before this.
That didn't help either.
Well, no, it's not, it's, no, it's not loaded, so you should use your laptop.
You're doing fine.
Somewhere, I hope.
Wait, this is the second.
Is that your packet?
Yeah.
There we go. There we go.
Are we ready?
Yep. We're ready.
So the, we'd like to institute program fees for adult sports programs. That's our next fees. Right now, we charge no fees for any of our adult sports program. And just a reminder, we do charge fees for our youth programming. We also have increased participation from non-residents. And we, as we're well aware, in 2025, we have growing operational and maintenance costs. So this is a presentation, hopefully, to get some fees so we can improve program supplies, maintenance, and manage non-resident use of town facilities. So we have rising costs, increased demand due to non-resident participation, and we would like to have equitable cost sharing among participants. There are obvious benefits to doing these things. So we have two proposed fee structures for adult programs. Right now, again, we charge our youth, our youth sports program $30 per session, which is usually six or eight weeks. We're suggesting that we have, our option A here is to charge $30 per session like we do for our youth. So it would be eight weeks. And it would be, for example, we have women's soccer on Monday night. So it would be eight weeks from this date to this date, eight sessions that you pay $30 for, for residents, 40 for non-residents. The other option is a punch card system, which is done through our software program that we currently use for our recreation programs. So it would be $30 for eight punches, so it's eight visits. So a session isn't one time coming to the recreation department for your program. It would be a session, so usually eight weeks. We do six to eight weeks for youth. Any questions on that piece?
Well, so is it an, oh, I'm sorry. Is it an option that people will be given? Or you're looking for direction as to either A or B?
Well, so initially, I presented this to the Rec Committee and provided two options and was hopeful that they would have some direction. And they said that either would be great. So if you have, I, I think that a punch card would be a great system for us to use if we had all of the technology that we needed currently in place, which we don't have yet. So it would be very difficult to manage. It would be probably like an old-fashioned punch card instead of a digital punch card. So for us, at this current state, if we were starting this tomorrow, I would want to use option A for the.
Seems to make sense.
Mr. Brown, did you have a comment?
No, that was the same question. I said, I guess I would recommend that we approve it with the flexibility to manage the program as you see fit.
As you see fit. I would agree with that.
I guess that's a motion. Unless there's more questions. Is there more to see?
I think there's more to see.
This is great. So I just did a breakdown of our average, average weekly participation data. This is pen and paper, so I did the best that I could. So for volleyball, we have residents usually 10, non-residents 15. Our basketball data, 15, average residents, eight non-residents. Soccer, five residents, three non-residents. This is, they happen once a week. Pickleball, we don't allow non-residents to participate. So there's an average of about 230 residents each week. There's multiple sessions of those. So we did a breakdown of an estimated revenue based on the participation that we have currently.
Mr. Muscally?
With respect to your estimates, I worked the numbers and I, I didn't come up with those numbers, but I don't think, I wasn't able, I don't know how many sessions we're talking about. So I assume that some of those programs have three sessions, some might have more or less. I mean, is that where the discrepancy is?
So we looked at, we were looking at which sessions run, not all sessions run all year long. So some run all year long, some run for certain months. So because pickleball is, we only do that indoor pickleball when, during the winter. Our participation wanes as the warm weather comes.
I mean, it does seem that.
We don't run that year-round.
Right, but it does seem that pickleball seems to be the biggest part of this revenue. I wonder what type of response, if any, you've had from the rather vociferous pickleball community in town.
Vociferous?
So we did have some pickleball folks came to our Recreation Committee and spoke up, mostly in support.
They pay in other towns already, so.
Thank you.
Keep going. I won't let them interrupt you again.
So, it's as if you knew what the next slide was. So we did look, Kevin and I were looking at some different communities and what they charge. So we tried to pick some different, different activities, but everybody does charge. So it was usually four to $5 a visit for residents, a little bit more for non-residents. So ours would be less for our residents than other communities and about on par for our non-resident fee. I also did a graph just because, so I didn't have to make a whole nother slide. The one on the right there is, I took, I took one week and counted like what towns folks come from, just so you can see for the ones who are coming from out of town, where, kind of where folks. The numbers don't exactly add up to the other one because, again, pen, paper, each week they came from different places. But I just wanted to show, you know, how far folks were traveling to come to our facility. And so in closing, we'd like to introduce fees. And do you have any questions?
Curious about the $3.75, why not just $4? Are you going to be making change all the time?
We tried, it'll, it'll be done through our software program, so it's paid online. But there, it, it's a session, so it's $30 per session, which we just.
Oh, I see. Okay.
We're not going to do the punch card, so it's all or nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
Got it.
And even with a punch card, you have to purchase the entire punch card. So it would be $30, yeah. And we just, we tried to keep, keep that because that's what we charge for our youth programs.
Got it, thank you.
Ms. Goldstone?
Same as last time. Are scholarships available either for the youth or for the adult programs with these fees?
Absolutely. We don't want to prevent people from participating, but.
Do we need public comment on a fee hearing?
Well, we're gonna, we will in a minute if the board is done. Any other questions or comments from the board?
No.
Okay. Any comments from the public regarding this hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So move.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion amongst the board.
I think it was Mr. Brown. Brown wanted to make the motion?
I would move approval of the fee changes by the Rec Department as presented.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Well done. Good luck. Excellent. Okay, we're going to move into business. Discuss and consider a draft charge document and vote to approve establishment of a short-term rental advisory committee. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Select Boards. As you all recall, the January 27th meeting, I provided a brief kind of outline summary background of the outstanding efforts of the Planning Board in establishing a short-term rental working group. The group started meeting in March of last year, finished up their series of meetings in August of last year. As a result of that great work, a draft short-term rental bylaw was presented to the Select Board in anticipation of town meeting. The presentation date was September 9th of last year. The Select Board, as you recall, opted to indefinitely postpone that due to the consensus that some additional work needed to be done. On January 27th, Select Board directed me to draft a draft mission charge documents for consideration. You have a copy of that draft mission charge in your packets. You also have a copy of the committee appointment policy. I wanted you to have a chance to review that as well. In general, the, the elements, the major elements of the draft mission and charge document call for a seven-member short-term, a temporary short-term advisory committee to include one member of the Select Board, one member of the Planning Board, one representative of the Falmouth Police Department, one member of the Board of Health, one licensed Realtor, and two residents. Again, a copy of the draft is in your packet. I had Town Council review the draft mission and charge document. She made a couple of necessary edits to it. It's my recommendation, Madam Chair and Select Board, that the Board approve the establishment of a temporary short-term rental advisory committee and approve the committee charge and mission document as presented this evening. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And we've seen this draft before, am I correct?
I don't believe so.
January 27th, the Board directed me to draft it.
To draft it, okay.
This is similar framework as what we did for the working group, but it's a little more in detail.
And did any of the board members, I don't think I saw any changes or suggestions to this.
I, I do have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Muscally.
I guess the first one is that it seems to be a given, then, that we're looking at a general bylaw with respect to regulation as opposed to the possibility of a zoning bylaw change that would deal with zoning issues. I mean, it seems like we're already making that determination in the charge or mission that we're giving to the committee. Am I correct in that regard?
I'm not making that. This is a draft. I mean, based upon the discussion that we had back on the 27th, I recall that being part of that discussion, but certainly this is a draft.
This is general bylaw, and in my mind, that, that means we're looking to, you know, regulate the short-term rentals, which obviously is an important part. But it's, it seems to be foreclosing the possibility that the committee might come back and recommend a zoning bylaw change. And I'm just curious as to, you know, whether my understanding is correct or whether we want to look at the, at the draft charge and maybe indicate some possibility of a zoning law change.
If that's what the Board desires to do, then again, this is a draft document. I was trying to encapsulate some of the discussion that was had on the 27th.
And I, and I think you did very well. Thank you.
Brown, and then Ms. Goldstone?
And so the working group, early on, discussed practicality of zoning versus general bylaw. And zoning, it seemed, would likely exclude short-term rentals in the majority of the areas where they exist. If, you know, if you use the general zoning that we have, unless you create a new zoning overlay.
I understand. All I'm saying is I think that that might be something that this group might, might want to consider. I understand what went into it, you know, previously. That's all.
Ms. Goldstone?
Yeah, I would agree, and I think, I, I think the, the mission, we need to be really specific in the mission, that we need mechanisms to both regulate the behavior of short-term rentals, to ensure that we have, that, that they are sanitary, that, you know, behavior of renters is, is regulated, that sort of thing. And, and I feel like that's what has been really well encapsulated in the general bylaw. That still doesn't get us to regulation or mechanisms that actually address the economic and housing impact of short-term rentals in our town. And to Mr. Brown's point, I think there are potential changes to zoning. Just doing a little bit of research, finding other towns that have done things like limiting the percentage of homes within residential zones that can be used for short-term rentals or simply adopting the, the stance that they all require a special permit. So I would like to see this mission specifically addressing the need to find mechanisms for regulating behavior of, of existing short-term rentals as well as addressing the economic and housing impacts. And I think that does require that we leave it a bit more open than specifying a general bylaw. And to that, and I think it would also be important, this does say that they'll provide quarterly progress updates. I, I think it would just be important that this committee report back to the Board with findings and suggestions before getting as far as actually drafting a, a bylaw that comes back to the Board.
Mr. Brown?
No, I was.
If, if I may, with, with respect to, to meetings, one of the concerns that, that had been raised the first go-around was that although the committee did a good job and had a number of, of public meetings or meetings to which the public was, was invited, those were all at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. And I'd suggest that, that the mission or the charge might be to hold meetings at various different times and various different places, possibly in town, to be able to generate as much feedback from the community as, as possible. And secondly, I will, you know, certainly second what Ms. Goldstone said. I've, I've said, well, I think we need to understand what it is we want to accomplish with these short-term rentals. Do we want to increase the affordable housing stock? Or, and/or do we want to just regulate the, the system? So I think we need to, and I think the committee will help us get to that point. But thank you.
I continue to say that I think that it's going to be difficult to increase the affordable housing stock with the short-term rental regulation. I don't want to complicate this to the point where it becomes unmanageable. I would love to see us manage this and then work on a, another project like the Vale &amp; Deed incentivizing ownership, incentivizing year-round rentals. That's a whole separate program. So, I mean, I certainly understand your concern and your comments, but I just feel like if we try to make this, try to solve all the problems, it's just not going to get done.
I think we all want, I think we all want to get it done, so I think.
If we keep it simple, we can at least get this done. If there's need to be something added to it to make it more palatable, I would certainly agree. But. But I don't want to try to make this thing, it's going to be the be-all and end-all of solving our housing crisis.
I don't think it would be the end-all, be-all, but I do think it, I don't think there's any one mechanism that's going to solve that. And I think this is potentially one of the mechanisms, and it's important to think about, as I said, both regulating the activity and also thinking about whether there are, and really digging into whether there are mechanisms to limit the economic and housing impact of short-term rentals through bylaws.
Mr. Zalinski?
Fellow colleagues, I find myself agreeing with Mr. Brown. The whole idea of an advisory committee is to let them be conceptual and work these things out. And it has to be progressionary because there are too many different instances that are different. If we try to over-regulate this from the very beginning, I think we're short-sheeting ourselves. So my personal opinion is, as Doug, I reiterate what Doug said, we don't want to make it so complicated that you get nothing done. So that's my personal opinion. That's the way I'd vote it.
I'm certainly not suggesting that we make it so complicated that we don't get anything done, you know, but I'll mention that our neighbors, and I wouldn't compare us to Nantucket, but our neighbors in Nantucket have been dealing with this issue and have had this issue before, town meeting, I think, three or four times, and can't seem to come to a consensus, and the problem just keeps escalating, so-
That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Well, but we'd need to, you know, try and deal with it, you know, as best we can.
We form these committees and we ask people to volunteer their time and their expertise and different, and then we box them in. We tell them how they have to think, and I don't think that that's right, not on an advisory committee. We still have the final say.
I guess I would be advocating, I think of it exactly the opposite way. This is an incredibly narrow mission that says draft a general bylaw that regulates short-term rentals. What I'm saying is that we need an advisory committee who can look at, how do we ensure that the short-term rentals we have, that activity is regulated? And are there ways to actually limit the impact of short-term rentals on our community? And I think there's an enormous amount of interest in our community in working on a community, and I see people in this room who have expressed interest in working on that second problem.
I'm sure that'll happen on its own within that committee.
But by the mission here, that's not part of, that's not under the purpose of that committee.
Okay, so are we not prepared to vote on this mission statement? Because what I'm hearing is people want to rewrite the mission statement.
I'm just gonna suggest maybe if there could be a simple edit somewhere that you might like to suggest that would add to this rather than take away. Maybe add a paragraph that broadens the scope a little bit.
Or do we wait and you get your edits to the town manager? I mean, I hate to do that, too, but at the same time, there seems to be an awful lot of sort of disagreement on how this has been written, and if you want to redo it, then we send our suggestions to the town manager?
I'm happy with the way it's written.
Madam Chair, could I just make a suggestion?
I agree with you.
Again, I, we could, if the Select Board desires, we can add in the third paragraph, "Mission of the committee is to prepare draft short-term rental zoning bylaw or general bylaw." Make it, don't make it specific. I mean, again, I was attempting in this draft to capture some of the discussion that I heard on the, on January 27th.
I would agree with you.
I did not intend to narrow this, put us in a box. So I can simply add that edit in terms of including the zoning bylaw is a potential product of this.
Madam Chair, I'd move the, and town manager's suggestion.
And one other comment. I think it was Select Board Member Mascali talked about the importance of having perhaps some alternative meeting times so that you can gather additional public input. I think that was one of the, maybe the shortfalls of the working group is that it was at a time that was not convenient for a lot of people to participate. So we'll have to craft that language, and I've got an example or a recommendation. In the fourth paragraph, "Committee is to convene its meetings at the earliest reasonable time," because I do think time is of the essence, like I mentioned on January 27th. I would not want to wait until the March meeting to come back with another draft, so let's try to get this done tonight. "They are to elect, select a chair, vice-chair, and recording secretary. Will select an agreeable meeting date and consider various times during the day in order to garner as much public input as possible," words to that effect. Not corner themselves into a specific date and time, but offer alternative times, perhaps. And I, I'll defer to Town Council as that. I don't know if we have a precedent for that, but I think this is so unique and so special, we're wanting to try to get additional public comment that maybe that, having those various meeting times is acceptable.
If I may, Madam-
Go ahead.
I mean, I certainly don't want to delay this unnecessarily either, so, and I appreciate Mr. Renshaw's suggestion. What I might offer as a possible edit is if we go to the third paragraph, "The mission of the committee is to report back to the Select Board its recommendations as to short-term rentals, including possibly a general bylaw or zoning law amendment."
Well, it is, it's short-term rental, a general bylaw for the Select Board, or zoning amendment.
Yeah, well, but I think it's even more than that. It's more their recommendations, which might include, possibly including a general bylaw or zoning amendment. That way, we get the whole picture from the advisory committee. With that amendment, I certainly support the mission statement as otherwise presented.
Okay, is that a motion, Mr.?
I'll withdraw my motion then.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to complicate this, but I did, I was made aware of another, and this is my omission. When you look at the second paragraph, I neglected to include Police Department representative. I have heard from Chief Laurie, and again, based upon some of the comments that we've had, I think having that-
I think it's a great addition.
I think it's really important.
I neglected to include that in the second paragraph, so as part of the edits, I'd insert the representative of the Falmouth Police Department.
Okay, there is a representation with individuals with law enforcement backgrounds, but-
Okay, I mean, I would not be opposed to either of those edits, or all three, I should say.
Motion to approve the mission statement as amended.
With the recommended edits, right.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve with the amended edits. Any further discussion amongst the board, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, "Discuss the Municipal Empowerment Act and Consider Drafting a Letter of Support." I believe, Ms. Goldstone, that you had asked to put this on, and we should have a copy of everything in your packet.
Yes, and thank you for including this in the agenda. I think there are some really important issues addressed in this Municipal Empowerment Act. One is the making permanent the ability of town bodies to meet either in hybrid or virtual format and making that permanent. And I think for many of our committees and the volunteers who are giving their time to our town, that's really important, that we make that permanent. And that is coming up against a deadline in the month of March when that COVID provision ends. The other things I think are really important that would, you know, be really valuable for this board to come back to, assuming this law passes, are some of the provisions for both additional revenue sources and additional tax exemptions for seniors in particular, but vulnerable populations with our town. And I think both of those could be very important in pursuing our, well, remedies to our affordable housing crisis. So those are the things that stand out to me as being particularly important for the town of Falmouth in this bill.
Any, Mr. Mascali?
No, I certainly second what Ms. Goldstone said, but I'd, certainly when the letter is drafted, I think it needs to be drafted in such a way that it is generally supportive of the act. I mean, there are a number of provisions there that I personally haven't looked through each and every one of them that we may not necessarily support without, you know, more information. So I think, my sense is that we submit a letter generally supporting, you know, indicating some of the, you know, the provisions that Ms. Goldstone mentioned, but not come out fully supportive of the act in its entirety because it's, there's a lot of stuff in there that I'm not sure we're all familiar with and in a position to say, go forward with at this point.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, if staff has identified any reporting requirements that might be cumbersome. I know there's a lot of stuff in here that looks like it's helpful, but there's a couple of requirements for reporting that maybe I would not really know whether or not it's a problem. I think Mr. Mascali's suggestions are good.
I would agree with that as well. I think a generalized letter supporting the act overall makes sense.
You know, indicate that we appreciate the flexibility it provides and we look forward to learning more about it, or something like that.
Is that a motion, Mr. Brown?
Yes, with Ms. Mascali's suggested edits. Or tone, I would say.
Concept and tone, yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to send a letter generally supporting the Empowerment Act.
Madam Chair, just a question for my clarity. So does the Board desire that this draft generally supporting be brought back to the Board for review, or?
It's timely, right?
It is, I think it is timely.
I don't think we're making any specific recommendations other than to just generally support it.
Yeah, I think you understand where we're coming from, Mr. Renshaw, and I think, you know, I'm confident that you'll capture that sentiment in the letter that goes out.
Could I add one thing, though? The whole make permanent the public meeting piece, I know we're gonna do it generally, I wonder if we should make a comment about that because I think that's really important for people.
Okay.
Well, I think you could highlight that.
To highlight that?
I have an asterisk next to that.
Okay. I think that and the other that I would love to see called out is the flexibility in tax revenue options for towns that it provides.
I would agree with that. So a letter that is basically a general letter, however, highlighting those two issues that this Board sees are important to Falmouth.
Understood.
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second? I was a motion.
I'll second.
It's sort of your motion, though.
A motion and a second. Any further-
Who's on first?
Okay, are we ready, Mr. Mascali?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the Board, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to us. Okay. Discuss and consider a vote to send a letter of endorsement to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for the Affordable Housing Project at 48 Benjamin Nye's Lane in North Falmouth.
Kim, we're checking, we're checking to see if those were preloaded.
I did it earlier.
You're amazing. Thank you.
One of many reasons. I just want to introduce, I'm Kim Fish, the Housing Coordinator for the Town of Falmouth, and this is Maureen Brown, the new Director of Land Acquisition for Habitat for Humanity, and she'll give the presentation to you. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
You might want to pull the mic towards you a little bit. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod is proposing to build 14 new affordable homes on a seven-and-a-half acre parcel of land at Benjamin, 48 Benjamin Nye's Lane in North Falmouth. Habitat for Humanity plans to permit this project through the Massachusetts Chapter 40B through a friendly 40B LIP local initiative program process. Habitat of Cape Cod is collaborating with Falmouth's 300 Committee Land Trust to execute this project. We believe, together with our efforts to maximize the use of the property for long-term public benefit, conserving 48 acres of land, ensuring future public access and the construction of much-needed community housing. We have our team here today. We have Warren Brody, our permitting attorney, Bob Riley, our Director of Construction, Kurt Weber, our architects, and from the 300 Committee, Joey Muramoto, Ben Foreman, and Leonard Johnson. So we're here today to share a brief overview of the Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod. Review our current plans for the proposed North Falmouth Woodlands Community Housing Project, including home and site plans, and move our local initiative project application forward requesting your support, Chair and Board. We thank the Select Board for your time in considering our application. Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod partners with families in need of affordable homes, fostering stability, self-reliance, and a strong sense of community. For those of you that have been on a Habitat build, the Sweat Equity Program has the homeowners working alongside volunteers for 250 to 500 hours, getting more involved in the community and engaging with their neighbors. The Habitat program offers homeowner education to prepare our homeowners for homeownership. These homes will be deed restricted at affordable prices determined by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The homes will be priced between 60 and 80% of the area median income, which averages house prices between $173,000 to $247,000. Am I not talking again?
No, it's okay.
Oh, I'm not switching?
Yeah.
Sorry. There we go.
There you go.
That's good. Sorry. These homes will be protected in perpetuity as affordable, and they'll be counted on the town subsidized housing inventory. The town has requested local preference, which would offer 70% of the offering to go to residents of the Town of Falmouth. This is the approximate prices of the homes recently for the 2024 area median income for Barnstable County. The new rates will come out in probably 2025, around April, around April 1st. This shows the gross maximum income allowed to earn for the families that will qualify for these homes. So Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod is known for its commitment to energy efficiency. We work with catalyst architects to develop well-designed, well-built homes that are solar-powered and energy-efficient. We're also work, Habitat for Humanity has been recognized by RESNET in May of 2022 for the efficiency rating and certification for building the most energy-efficient Habitat for Humanity home throughout the United States. We're also working to implement a sustainable wastewater and stormwater design in our project through the Horstley-Witten Group and with Resilient Roots to educate our homeowners on landscape design and organic land care. At 48 Benjamin Nye, we're proposing 14 single-family homes. We've been awarded $1.5 million by the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund toward land acquisition and construction of these homes. There will be a mix of three-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, and a four-bedroom home, capes, ranches, and a colonial. Here's some of our homes. Two-bedroom in Orleans, Brewster, and site plan of the projects. So you can see where the seven-and-a-half acres up at the top here is where we'll be building the homes, and the area here is going to be protected under the 300 Committee's Land Trust. So last October, we had a couple of family meetings, neighborhood meetings. We offered the neighbors an opportunity to preview the site. And this shows the original site on the right side. And on the left side is the revised plan as we address the neighbors' concerns. Along the right side of the property, some of the neighbors were concerned about the trees and the property being so close to their neighbors. So we took the 30-foot protective buffer and increased it to 45. You'll see that on the left side here. We originally had the sewer treatment system in the left corner here. See, there's the gray area just on the left, and we pushed that over to the other side of the street. We adjusted some of the home sites, moving driveways and the homes, and changed the floor plans from ranches to capes to reduce the amount of excavation of the land. So, I should mention, at our meeting, we had about 100 neighbors attended. So, I should mention, at our meeting, we had about 100 neighbors attended and shared their comments over the two meetings that we offered. And these are some of the changes I mentioned, the 30 to 45, moving the treatment facility.
I had a question on that slide.
One back?
No, the one that you're on.
Okay.
Where you say increase the no-disturb buffer from the property line at Cameron Road from 30 feet to 45 feet, also reduce some lots on the westerly side of the property to increase the buffer, but you don't say by how much? So I'm curious about that.
I'll just see if I... I think there's one plan that shows, I think it was just the house here? You mean, the house here on the corner?
Where's the west here?
That would be great. Thank you, sir.
So this house here on the end, we pushed, we swapped the driveway. I'll show a little.
You can use the cursor as a pointer?
Oh, where's that?
The mouse. Keyboard mouse?
Oh, I see. Oh, sorry, gotcha, okay. Perfect. So that's the old one, right? Let me see, that's the old one? Let me get the new one. That's the original. Okay. So over here is where they increased the buffer.
It's this side.
It's the neighbors that were concerned. See that over here?
Right, yeah. There's another pla...
Do you want the side-by-sides?
No, I can...
Those are both the same planes.
Yeah, I see.
Those are the same planes.
Oh, those are the same planes, yes.
Yeah. Oh, I see one, okay. I can get you those. There we go.
Okay, yeah. So this is, okay, oh, here it is to answer your question, right, perfect. This is the, this is the increased buffer zone here. This was 30, this is 45. You can see on this particular lot here, on this plan, it just goes like that. We just took that line and straightened it out. Things like that, so we did that. So that's a little bit more than what's over here.
It was this house here we flipped, right? Didn't move the, see what I did?
Yeah, that house got flipped.
So the driveway's closer and the foundations.
Small things like that. There was another place we did that.
Is it over here? Looks like there's a couple on the northwest, yeah.
Lot up here.
Yeah, they're on the west side.
That got straightened out over here. So it doesn't have a point to it anymore, it's just a straight line. Where there were little points like that, and up there, we just took that out and made it a straight line from one corner to the other.
A little addition.
Okay, but it doesn't, it doesn't tell me how many feet or anything like that, like it does in the previous sentence, so I was just curious. Okay.
I can get back to that.
I'd like to know that. That would be great, thank you.
I have a question if we could.
Go ahead, see what the subject was moved in.
If I could, I have a question about your site plan also. It seems like the folks that live in this neighborhood are gonna wanna walk right out into the woodland. How would they access the woodland area? Will they have to go out the driveway and walk around to a public access?
That's the Quaker, um, Joanne Muramoto, the President of the 300 Club.
Hi, I'm Joanne Muramoto, President of the 300 Committee Land Trust. As part of the conditions of the land grant, we have to provide public access to the conservation portion of the parcel. And currently, we're planning a small parking area that will go on Quaker Road opposite this proposed affordable housing development. The idea is that the public access to the conservation area will be on the western side of the parcel, and the intent is not to direct the public to go into the affordable housing parcel in order to access the conservation parcel for privacy reasons.
Certainly.
So that's the intent. There will be a small trail from the affordable housing development area into the conservation parcel that will join the trail, but that's not intended to be the main public access.
Right, I don't, I'm not proposing that it should be. I'm just curious if there's a provision between a couple of these lots where there will be a path?
Yes.
Because it seems it's only natural, they're gonna wanna walk right out into the woods?
Yes.
Rather than go, get in a car and drive away?
There's going to be one small designated trail from the subdivision into, sorry, to join the conservation trail, so that not every lot will have its own footpath. We wanna avoid that, and Habitat does too.
Right. I just thought there would possibly be a place in between a couple of those lots in the center portion. Where would that trail be?
It's on the north, west side of the 7.5 acre parcel, and it's between two lots.
So here's the overall plan. I believe it's gonna be between two of these lots over here.
That's what I was expecting, but I just don't see it there, so I was curious.
It's not on the plan yet, Tom. Dan.
Doug, whatever.
Those are the G's.
Okay, it's not on there, but it will be?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So should it be approved? Our goal is to get the local initiative application submitted to the state. It'll take 30 days. They'll send a letter out to notice the town and allow comments on any of the applications submitted. They'll perform a site visit and offer some project analysis on the project, and then they'll issue the project eligibility letter, which is what we will need to submit a ZBA application. The goal is to have the application in the spring and this year, and then start our zoning Board of Appeals process. In January 26, post-permitting, we will close on the property and start infrastructure in March of 2026. This will be two phases. The first phase will begin of seven homes in March and April of 2027, and hopefully a certificate of occupancies in August of '28. And the second phase will begin in September with COs available in 2030.
Questions from the board. Mr. Muscally, we'll start with you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to, you know, compliment and congratulate the 300 Committee and Habitat for Humanity for this project. It recognizes the need for affordable housing in the Town of Falmouth, but also substantially conserves natural resources, and we appreciate the efforts of both organizations. I just have a couple of questions, one of which is there was reference that the Board of Habitat might be increasing or changing its policy with respect to sale of units to families at 100% AMI or more. Has that happened yet, or is it still in the works?
It's in discussion.
Or it's been decided not?
No, the board is meeting Tuesday night, and I believe, oh, tomorrow night, yeah, and I believe they're discussing it at that meeting to consider.
And what would that do to this application if they should change their policy to allow 100% AMI?
We would make a minor modification before we sent it on to HLC.
Okay. And then maybe a question for council. The local preference is 70%, as I understand it.
Well, we request 70% is the most that we can get, but it's within the...
Would you, you need to come up to the podium and introduce yourself, please.
Yes. My name is Warren Brody. I'm a board member of Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, also will be council before the ZBA for this development, also a Falmouth resident. So we ask for 70%. That's the most that we can get, and...
So I guess my question was, you have 14 units.
Yeah.
70% is 9.8.
Round down.
Why are, you have to round down as opposed to...
Round down, yeah. It's round down. And it's not just residents, it's people who work in the town, have children.
Work in or have children, or, okay. And then one final question, and it's kinda getting into the weeds, but I had never seen it before, but on resale, you say that resales will be to only families at 80% AMI. Why isn't it 60% for some of them that were sold originally at 60% and 80%? Why would it all be just at 80%? Just wondering.
It's an excellent question. I mean, we're wrestling with the 100% aspect. But traditionally, qualified units, the resale price was always 80% of AMI. So whether it was 60%, 45%, or whatever, the resale, the first resale could be at 80%, up to 80%.
And is that...
It's just always been done that way.
Is that a Habitat policy, or is that coming from the state as far as that?
No, from the state. And the feds, the feds as well.
It would seem to make more sense that you could sell at 60% if they were originally offered at 60%. It would help increase the supply of affordable housing for more people possibly if it was allowed for people at 60% AMI. Just a thought.
I think the real issue is going to be, what do we do with 100%?
Yeah.
Do we have resales at 100%? And does that qualify for keeping them in perpetuity?
Yeah, I mean, that's why I kinda asked that other question. I mean, I'm not sure how big of a, you know, a change that will be if the board decides to do that, as far as your application is concerned.
Yeah. No, we'll have no more about it tomorrow, but...
Good luck.
These are all issues that we'll be discussing.
Mr. Brown?
Well, I'm thankful for Mr. Muscally bringing that up. I gotta say, I'm very excited to see that we have 60% AMI on some of these units. I've been asking developers to try to get to that, and nobody in the private market's been able to do that. And with the town providing its assistance in the 300 Committee with the land, this is like the only opportunity we're gonna get right now for the 60% AMI, so I hope that doesn't change. And, you know, I think our letter of support is reflected on what's described here, so I hope this project won't change.
From the 60%?
Right.
No, it'll be 60. It'll be what, which two go to the 100%? I think they said if they did pass, if the board does pass the allotment for 100% of AMI, probably one from each would come off to go to 100%, whether it's the 60 or the 80.
But I mean, we're given a letter of support for this the way it's presented, so maybe this project could be exempt from future board decisions because it's being made today? I don't know. Seems like...
Fair question.
I'd hate to see it get changed from what we're writing a letter of support from.
Right now, all we have to talk about is 60% and 80%.
Right.
So tomorrow, there may be another decision made, but right now, that is the program.
Well, I'd feel differently about the project if the numbers changed. I mean, I'd still support it. I don't wanna say I wouldn't, but I'd be disappointed if it was changed, but to your board. Well, to lose the 60%, I mean, like I said, this is the only opportunity we've seen yet to have that, and there's a real need in Falmouth for this, so maybe that's a comment for the board for your discussion tomorrow.
Well, historically, we kept our limits at 65% of AMI for a long, long time. We struggled to get to 80%, and we've remained at 80% for some time. But now, I mean, we have the realization that it takes, what, 225% of AMI to afford the median house in town?
Mm-hmm.
So what does, what does 100% really do for the community?
I understand.
So...
But these people have been waiting for a long time with this, that are in this bracket.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Goldstone, did you have a comment or question?
I, you know, I guess I would respond to what you're saying, Mr. Brown, just in that, yes, it would be one fewer unit at 60% and one fewer at 80%, and every unit does count, but I think it's in recognition of the diversity of need in the town and is a move that has come, I believe, with support from the Affordable Housing Committee, right? We need homes at all of these levels, and I think this project just, it not only accomplishes it, it really nails so many things that we're looking for in affordable housing. I mean, the examples that were shown of Habitat homes, right? These are really attractive, energy-efficient homes. They're designing not only the home, but the landscaping and the neighborhood with environmental principles in mind, and working with the 300 Committee for the conservation around it. If you look at the density of the neighborhood compared to the surrounding neighborhood, it seems very in-keeping, and I love that you've, you know, done that community outreach already with neighbors and made adjustments to accommodate that, and it has the local preference. I mean, I think it just, it really checks about as many boxes as you could on affordable housing.
I'm not knocking the project. I certainly think it's a great project. I'm just pointing out that when we have a public-private partnership, a partnership like this, it's the only opportunity to get that 60%. The private developers are gonna do the 80 and the 100. We've seen that repeatedly, and they've explained to us that they can't do the 60, so that's why I don't wanna miss this opportunity.
Mr. Muscally?
Maybe, and following on that, I guess the question back to Habitat is, is there any way the project is viable with, if the project, if the board goes for 100%, is the project at all viable, taking away the affordables and just keeping those at 60% and taking the excess out of the 80% if it's still viable? In other words, keeping seven units at 60%, which is what Mr. Brown is suggesting. I don't know if it's viable or not, but it's, you know, would be something, you know, for the applicant to consider.
Let me just address that, you know, mathematically. If the resale price is based on 100% of AMI, Habitat gets more money at the sale, so it's really easier for us to raise the prices.
Well, but you would then be selling one unit not at 60, one less unit at 60%.
Yeah.
One less unit at 80%. So if you do go to 100%, could the units stay at 60% seven, 80% five, and two at 100%? I think that's what Mr. Brown's...
If there had to be a change, yeah, that would be...
If it's viable, I don't know, but if it's, it would certainly satisfy my colleague's question.
You talk about viability. Of course, we're not a for-profit developer. Every time we sell a house, we lose hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Correct.
It has to be made up through fundraising, so viabilities, we have a different way of looking at that, I suppose.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, I'm just wondering if there can be an understanding with this longtime community partner that this is an agreement based on the current policy and the current application, which is at 80%, not 100%?
And 60.
Very importantly, and 60, right. And that if there is a policy change and Habitat wants to change the mix of affordability, that before submitting the comprehensive permit to the ZBA, it would come back to this board again for approval? And that's not something that would be legally required, but I think it could be, you know, a request that Habitat honor that request of the board, and this is an entity that I think, you know, we don't normally operate on trust, but in this circumstance...
If I had to trust anybody, it would be them right now.
I agree with Mr. Zunski.
And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hold up Project hostage either. I just, just wanna emphasize the need.
Can I just make two comments? One is, I just wanna thank Habitat for Humanity because all of their projects that have come before us provide handicap-accessible and visitable options, and I think that is incredibly important, and that doesn't happen all the time with the applications that come in front of us, so thank you for that. My second comment is I do wanna know what the size of that increase is on that buffer on the westerly side. So I certainly don't wanna hold it up either, but I would like to know that, that number.
To clarify, are you looking for the amount of square footage of the lot reduction? Because they said it's going from 30 to 45 feet wide, right?
It's also reduced some lots on the westerly side of the property to increase the buffer. I wanna know what that number is.
I see.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Mr. Zunski, did you wanna say something?
I'd like to move this motion to endorse this LIP application of Habitat Humanity Cape Cod to construct 14 single-family homes, for ownership to be deed restricted as affordable at 48 Benjamin Nye Lane, North Falmouth, by sending a letter outlining their approval to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, and by signing the LIP application, and I dare anybody to challenge that.
Would you dare us to second it?
Bring it.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
Can I clarify whether in that endorsement we are endorsing as proposed and they would have to come back for amendment, or whether we are allowing any flexibility in the proposal?
My motion, trust the fact that if there is a change, they would come back to us.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Any... Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Renshaw, we're gonna vote Article Recommendations for the April 2025 Annual Town Meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we are. Madam Chair and Select Board, included in your packet are the eight draft article recommendations and explanations, whose Select Board will submit formal recommendation to town meeting. As you know, these recommendations are to be printed in the Town Meeting Warrant Book, which will be distributed to all Town Meeting members. The Finance Committee submits recommendations for financial articles. Planning Board submits recommendations for zoning articles, and the Community Preservation Committee submits recommendations for funding from the Community Preservation Fund. Madam Chair and Select Board, the eight articles falling under the Select Board's purview to be included in the April 2025 Town Meeting Warrant and considered tonight are Articles Four, Nineteen, Twenty, Twenty-One, Thirty-Nine, Forty, Forty-One, and Article Forty-Two. As I mentioned, included in your packet are drafts, recommendations, and explanations, which have been prepared by staff for all eight of these articles, subject to discussion and approval tonight. These recommendations and explanations can be amended based on input received from the Select Board this evening during our discussion. As you know, the recommendations must be voted by the Select Board in order to be printed and submitted to town meeting. Importantly, March third is the date where these, the Town Meeting Warrant Book is scheduled to be sent to the printer, so that is a date certain and why this is time-sensitive. Our next meeting is March tenth, so getting these completed tonight and to the printer on time is important. What I'd like to do, Madam Chair, is go through each of these and talk a little bit about the recommendations and have that discussion, starting with Article Four, which is to see if the town will vote to amend the town's position classification plan. The recommendation is to see, to vote to amend the town's position classification plan as follows. There's a table in your packet. In terms of the explanation, there's two new positions that I'm recommending be created, and the reclassification of three positions. I'll start with the two new positions that we're proposing to be created. The Deputy Building Commissioner, this is a matter of importance in terms of succession planning. The new position is needed to provide support to the Building Commissioner and the oversight of the Building Office when the Building Commissioner is out, but as I mentioned, succession planning is a huge, huge factor. It's been pointed out to me that years ago, when we had this Building Commissioner position vacant, it was a challenge for us to fill it. Having a deputy position created through this reclassification is gonna allow us to have that succession planning already in place. The Deputy Building Commissioner's duties would include those of the Assistant Zoning Compliance Officer, and the budget for FY twenty-six does not include funding for any additional position. We're basically anticipating that the new position would be filled via internal promotion, which again, I think is important to the succession planning. The second new position that's being proposed is the creation of a Community Development Director. This is also, there's kind of a multifaceted reasoning behind the importance of creating this position. Number one, better coordination and oversight of the staff in the upstairs portion of the building, and as well as downstairs, the building and conservation offices and health. The, in the eighteen months that I've been here as town manager, I've noticed that there's a leadership and guidance and support, managerial support void, I believe. The creation of this Community Development Director position would provide that leadership and management and direct day-to-day oversight, and quite honestly, it would increase the efficiencies and effectiveness of the Community Development Department and reduce my direct reporting from sixteen to twelve. Typically, seven to ten direct reports is kind of the span of control that's considered ideal. Right now, the town manager position supervises, directly supervises sixteen. So the creation of this position, in addition to increasing, enhancing the efficiency and effectiveness of that important function, community development, it would also allow my efforts to be more focused on a reduced number of direct reports. So it's my recommendation, again, that the town meeting support this recommendation for the creation of this new position. The reclassifications, again, looking at the Electrical Inspector, Plumbing and Gas Inspector, and Local Inspector, all in the Building Office. Huge challenges traditionally, historically, for the town to fill these positions, to recruit, to fill vacancies, and also, it's become a retention issue, so the recommendation is to adjust the classification for these positions as provided for in the chart. Any questions on Article Four, what's being recommended and the explanation?
Mr. Brown?
Just to clarify, so would the town planner then be the person that would be in Community Director position?
We've not decided, honestly, we've not decided. It would be an internal position that would be, that would be placed into this, a promotional opportunity. We've not decided internally yet where that would come from.
Probably aware that we've had this Community Director brought to town meeting like three times previously.
Or of the last effort to have it created, yes, yes. You know, my recommendation is that we not backfill a position. I understand the last time perhaps this was brought to town meeting, there was concern about perhaps adding another supervisory layer and not having enough boots on the ground doing the work. My recommendation, if this were to be approved, would be not to backfill a position, and again, we haven't landed on a decision as far as who would fill this. We're gonna have some more internal discussions, but it would not be creating a new position. It would be creating a Community Development Director, but the incumbent, the position that that would be promoted into, would continue to maintain there his or her current responsibilities in addition to these new responsibilities as far as oversight and leadership of the new department of Community Development.
I would say we're gonna need a structure map of how it's gonna be done and who it's gonna be, and, you know, it's gonna have to be really clear that it's a different presentation than in years past, because it was just, the feeling was that we're top-heavy, or it was at the time, that we were top-heavy in management, and town meeting is, you know, fiscally conservative, so.
Understood. Again, I just, in terms of providing more focused leadership, guidance, and management of that, really critically important function is the town. A lot of the discussions we have currently with regards to housing, I think it's just important that we have that guidance and leadership, that position in the hierarchy in the organizational chart. So we will put together some diagrams and some visuals to kind of show what that's gonna look like.
I recall in the years past, it wasn't that anybody thought it wasn't a good idea, they just didn't wanna pay for it, and they were just like, you know, just do more with less and just get it done. It was kind of the sentiment.
Right, so one of the points that we want to emphasize is that the budget has zero new positions, right? So we're asking to create this new position, fill it internally with no budget for any extra positions.
That'll be the key to success.
Yep.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Moving on to Article Nineteen, I believe the petitioner for Article Nineteen is here, and I'm now gonna attempt to go through the, the petitioner did a fantastic job with the presentation, but as you all recall, this is in regards to amending Chapter one ninety-one Solid Ways of the Code of Falmouth by adding the section prohibition of the sale and release of balloons inflated with lighter-than-air gas. Again, the petitioner did a fantastic job with the presentation when we last met on February tenth. The recommendation is that the town vote Article Nineteen as printed, and you can read with regards to the explanation. Basically, the intent is to reduce the number of lighter-than-air balloons that litter, quite literally, the environment after intentional or unintentional release. So again, Madam Chair and Select Board, it's our recommendation, the town vote Article Nineteen as printed.
Thank you.
Any questions on that? We'll move on.
Article Twenty?
Article Twenty. Again, the recommendation is that the town vote Article Twenty as printed. This is an, the explanation is an act honoring, empowering, and recognizing our service members and veterans, the Hero Act, as we referenced back on February tenth, which was adopted in 2024 by the Commonwealth, creating a new local option that municipalities may adopt to increase the real estate tax exemption amounts available to certain veterans. In effect, this doubles, I believe, the exemption amount available to veterans in the community. And again, it's a recommendation that town meeting vote to approve, to vote Article Twenty as printed. Any questions on Article Twenty?
Good.
Article Twenty-One, the recommendation is that town vote to authorize the Select Board to lease portions of the following town-owned parcels for some up to thirty years for the purposes of the article. You have included in your packets that table indicating the particular town-owned sites with regards to where these leases would be in place. The article authorizes the Select Board to enter into lease agreements with solar vendors for a term of up to thirty years. Specific terms of the lease would be determined by the Town Manager's Office and subject to Select Board approval. The town's actively pursuing, as you all know, opportunities to increase implementation of PV installations across the town. The listed sites have been already evaluated and are expected to deliver significant cost savings to the town. Be happy to answer any questions on that, Article Twenty-One.
Do you anticipate having like RFPs for these, a competitive bidding? How do you think these will go? Is that yet determined?
Good.
So we'd like to give you a good, lengthy explanation of how we evaluate the pros and cons of ownership and PPA and what the process is. This will be coming before the board at the next meeting relative to that consent agenda item, but very briefly, there is a consortium called Power Options, which is a nonprofit institution that does bidding for higher education as well as municipalities and health institutions. So that's the bidding process that we anticipate using for power purchase agreements.
Good.
Thank you.
Any other questions on Article Twenty-One? Moving on to Article Thirty-nine, the recommendation is that town vote Article Thirty-nine as printed. As you see in your packets, the explanation is this refers to a donation of a very small, about a fifth of an acre, piece of land being offered by the owners to facilitate work on the Opera Kuna Mesut River Restoration Project. Town requires this access to this privately-owned land in order to carry out wetland restoration work. As indicated in your packet, approval of this article would require a two-thirds town meeting votes. Any questions on Article Thirty-nine?
It was nice of them to donate the land.
If no questions, I'll move on to Article Forty. Recommendation is the town vote Article Forty as printed. This article would authorize the Select Board to draft and submit a Home Rule petition, article to amend the Falmouth Town Charter to establish the Falmouth Licensing Commission. The commission would be tasked with the issuance of all licenses to sell alcohol and all common victualler licenses for restaurants throughout the town. The commission would be charged with enforcement of the laws and regulations pertaining to such licenses. Commission would be comprised of members appointed by the Select Board. Additional licensing responsibilities could be added either through the petition or by the enactment of a bylaw at town meeting or both. And again, the purpose of the creation of the commission is to alleviate some of the administrative and regulatory burden on the Select Board. Questions on Article Forty?
Looks like the way we discussed it.
We have talked about it, yeah.
Moving on to Article Forty-One, the recommendation is the town vote Article Forty-One as printed. This article authorizes Select Board to lease property for parking in the downtown area. If approved, the town manager would issue a request for proposals, or RFP, to solicit competitive proposals from property owners within walking distance of Falmouth Village. The town's previously leased parking, as you all know, from Martha's Vineyard Bank behind eighty-four Main Street with access from Catherine Lee Bates Road. If approved, this article would require a two-thirds meeting vote for approval. Any questions on Article Forty-One?
One question I do have is, we have voted previously a article similar to this, and the town manager, previous town manager did, as you mentioned, the Martha's Vineyard Lot. I thought it was a standing vote. Is this, when we vote this today, this should be going forward, you'll have this opportunity, won't you? Or does that have to be voted each year?
Did it expire to the current vote?
Yeah. Do you wanna take that?
This is for the...
Yes, yes.
So the last time that this was put before town meeting, it was described as a study, and it was temporary. It was intended to see if it was a good fit to try to lease some property in the downtown area for parking, and when the RFP went out, it had a maximum length of three years. It was a successful relationship, and it was a successful endeavor, and so now the town is looking to reestablish that and make it a more permanent situation to lease something in the downtown area for additional parking.
And that would be at the town manager's discretion. We won't have to vote it again unless it changes, right?
Well, leases have a maximum term of thirty years, so...
I won't have to vote it again.
You might.
Help you around. You're around, Doc.
But just to clarify, the lease will, the lease will have to be approved, voted by the Select Board, right? So this is town meeting authorization to...
To authorize, to go...
To authorize the lease, and then if I'm not mistaken, the lease would come back to this board for approval.
Yeah, it's an, town meeting has to authorize the board to enter into lease, and then you will be authorized to sign the lease.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If no other questions, we'll conclude with Article Forty-two. The recommendation is town, the town vote Article Forty-two as printed. Madam Chair and Select Board, this article is a companion to Article Twenty-six, which is a funding piece, to construct a designated safe access path to the Shining Seat Bike Path from Church Street through the Church of the Messiah property. The article grants the town an access easement, which allows the public to use the access path constructed under Article Twenty-six. Last year, I recall having conversations with representatives from Church of the Messiah, and as you all likely know, their concern is folks trying to access the bike path, cutting through the property, through the grave section, graveyard section of the Church of the Messiah. So this would alleviate some of that concern by giving this access and allowing a path that does not cross through the grave of the church. And again, town, the recommendation is the town vote Article Forty-two as printed. Any questions on Article Forty-two?
No.
So Madam Chair and Select Board, it's my recommendation that the boards vote to approve the April 2025 Town Meeting Article Recommendations as submitted this evening.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the recommendations as printed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Okay, update and discuss non-compliant soils at John Neal Baseball Fields, Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can honestly, as I sit before you tonight, and after having been here for eighteen months, I can honestly say this is the last matter that I anticipated having to discuss with you. A lot of, a lot of what we're gonna talk about in terms of the overview background has already been presented via some press releases. I do want to provide kind of a brief overview, but let me preface my comments by saying this. Our primary focus has been and remains the health and safety of the community as we kind of work through the, number one, the further research and identification of the issue, and then ultimately, developing a remediation plan. Health, safety of the community remains our number-one focus.
Folks, please come in quietly and have a seat.
As you all know, during recent construction and installation of the lighting, the Musco lighting at the ball fields, there was discovered some unsuitable fill material containing glass and metal objects within the excavated fill. The removal fill material was stockpiled properly onsite and had been covered with plastic. As we were closing out Phase One of the project, which again amounted to the installation of those Musco lights, the DPW reached out to the engineer of record and inquired as to how that spoil material from the pit was, from the pits was to be removed. RAD, which was the subcontractor doing the construction excavation, explained that, you know, because of the materials that were obviously in the material, they'd have to be disposed of properly. DPW reached out in late November to a licensed site professional, Arcadis, to have the material kind of analyzed to develop a plan for the removal, again, of the spoils that had been the result of the excavation of the light standards. Back on December eleventh, there was an inspection via backhoe of the soils in that spoil pile. Those spoils, samples were sent to a laboratory in accordance with the Massachusetts Landfall Disposal parameters. During the sampling of those spoil materials... During the sampling of those spoil materials, spoiled pile materials, again, the examiners identified broken glass bottles and metal. As has been reported, some additional investigation was done by town staff and the LSP, Arcadis. We identified that, as is common knowledge now, that the baseball fields, which were the initial construction begun in nineteen-seventy-seven timeframe, the land on which the baseball fields were constructed was municipal waste operated in the forties and fifties. There's currently an ongoing investigation and work being done, but I want to, number one, tonight, provide an update on the fourteen soil borings that were taken, again, back in December. December nineteenth and twentieth is when Arcadis, the LSP, conducted the fourteen borings, sent the, the results of those borings off for analysis. And as part of a risk assessment report, which has been recently released, and the select board has given copies, and it's now posted on the website, it was identified that there were elements of lead, arsenic zinc, and PCBs. Importantly, the lead exceeded the MCP or Massachusetts Contingency Plant Standards for lead in the soils. And as you can see in your packet, there's a copy of the, of the risk assessment, which includes, I think importantly, a two-page summary, which kind of provides a good overview of the findings of that risk assessment. In particular, the lead is a concern, short and long-term exposure concern for, for young people particularly. The standards that were discovered on Field One, or the threshold was well above the state threshold for lead. In Fields Two and Three, the standards were below the state MCP standards for S-one, which is basically kind of the residential standard for exposure. And for a reference point, on Fields Two, which was considered by the LSP as a field which did not represent an immediate health risk, the, the parts per million or kilogram per, milligram per kilogram findings for Site Two borings were about a hundred and ninety parts per million, where the state threshold is two hundred parts per million. So although it was less than, again, the state MCP threshold of two hundred, the readings were close. Field Three was much lesser, I believe forty-five to fifty parts per million in Field Three. The reported concentrations of lead, arsenic zinc, and the PCBs were, exceeded the thresholds and require, as has been explained in the report, notification to Mass DEP. It kicks in the hundred-and-twenty-day mandatory notification period. Importantly, Select Board, we're working with Arcadis, our LSP, to develop a plan for remediation. We had a very productive preliminary call back in mid-January, January fifteenth, with the representative with Mass DEP. So Mass DEP was kind of made aware preliminarily of the results. The next step is to submit, working with the LSP, submit this risk assessment and have further discussions with Mass DEP to further develop that remediation plan. As I mentioned, the safety of the public remains the town's primary concern. Importantly, when we first were told of the results of that initial soil testing and some of the findings with regards to the lead, arsenic zinc, and PCBs, back on January ninth, I directed the DPW close access, shut down access, public access to the fields. That access has been, has remained secured since January ninth. The Department of Public Works and my office continues to work with our LSP to have the stockpiled soil, again, those spoils from the initial Phase One light pole borings, properly removed and disposed of in an off-site permitted facility. The most recent update we received just late last week from the LSP, and this is significant next step, where the LSP is going to be conducting a geophysical survey of the area to definitively delineate the kind of outer boundaries of the landfill. And the results of the survey, we anticipate, are going to be available in early March. Based on the results of this geophysical survey, I'm being told that the LSP will conduct additional soil boring, soil borings and monitoring wells. The installation of these monitoring wells are important to determine how the underground water, the hydrology is flowing from the former landfill, the direction of that, that underground water flow. We anticipate the results of that monitoring to be completed on or about March eleventh to March twelve, but we'll continue to provide the select board and the public with updates as we receive them with regards to next steps. Staff is currently working with the LSP, as I mentioned, to explore site remediation options, to include some rough cost projection estimates for both the full remediation of all three fields and completing previously planned field and facility improvements. What we do going forward, again, remediating and making the field safe are our primary concern, but as we do that and as we enter into the planning for the remediation, what that it's going to look like, it's also going to be very important that the town plans for the addition of the Phase Two improvements, because once we close this site and implement the, the recommended closure and remediation, it would require additional permitting and LSP involvement to dig basically into that. You don't want to lay down a barrier, if that's a solution that we agree to, in twenty-twenty-five, and only have to come back to make the additional improvements for the ADA compliance and some of the bleacher work later on. So my point is, when we do this, we need to do it, be all-inclusive, properly close the landfill, complete that remediation process, and plan and construct the improvements at the same time, so we're not, if you can go back after the fact and having to penetrate that, that barrier. Madam Chair, Select Board, importantly, and this is the big discussion that I wanted to have with both the Select Board and, and the community, although the report that was recently released, the risk assessment report prepared by Arcadis, our LSP, again, they did a fantastic job and were very responsive and provided us the results as quickly as they could. Although the, the recommendation of the, the findings of the LSP indicate that concentrations of the lead discovered within two of the three fields, Field Two and Three, the southernmost fields, do not exceed the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection health risk thresholds, again, that two hundred parts per million threshold. I believe, as town manager, again, with the knowledge that the public health and safety are our primary focus and should be, I believe that a decision to maintain the use of one or more of those fields while remediating Field One is problematic, and here's why. I feel that's going to be important, and Peter McConner, he can speak to this, I'm going to ask him to come to the podium and talk a little bit about this. One of the issues that I have, and included in your packet is kind of the aerial photograph of the, of the ball fields as they, as they lay. Field One is the field, based upon the findings of the LSP, that needs to be shut down immediately. There's to be no play on it. It was Fields Two and Three that the LSP suggested may be played on in twenty-twenty-five for a twelve-month period, but then they need to be shut down. It's my opinion and staff's opinion that, again, remediating all three fields and getting the remediation process underway as quickly as possible is going to be the safest route. It's going to be, in my opinion, very challenging for us to manage and oversee, keep people off of Field One. When a ball, a fly ball is hit from one field into the Field One, it's going to be very difficult for us to kind of manage keeping people off that field. The other issue, concern that I have, is that the southernmost parking that borders Fields Two and Three, we're being told by the LSP, requires some additional borings. The data set is incomplete, and we suspect that there may be some higher readings. So the LSP is recommending that if the town were to consider its findings and allow play on Fields Two and Three, folks would have to park adjacent, on the northernmost field, which is adjacent to Field One. That's problematic, because Field One is the hot field. That's the field with the highest level, levels of lead concentrations. And again, managing that process, if people are dropping their kids off and parking adjacent to Field One, the hot field, and having to walk to Fields Two and Three to play would be a challenge, I feel. In terms of the timing of the remediation and getting the needed, necessary Phase Two improvements completed, the cost of mobilizing a contractor, I think it's, it just makes sense for the town to close all three fields and initiate the remediation process as quickly as possible. We have identified, working with Falmouth Youth Baseball Association, we've identified three fields that we could make improvements to, that would be alternative fields for the twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five season, likely twenty-twenty-six season, because this remediation is going to take some time to complete. Is it ideal, though, that we have to utilize these, these three alternative fields? It's not ideal, and I understand some of the concerns of the Falmouth Youth Baseball Association. There's a lot of pride, and rightfully so, and a lot of sweat equity that's been placed in those, in the John Neal ball fields. But I think because we do have optional fields, and we've identified, working with the Parks Division, those fields, and they could be made ready for play for the twenty-twenty-five season. And because of all the concerns that I've outlined with regards to the use of Fields Two and Three, I think it makes sense, and it's in the public's best interest, that we just shut down all three fields and initiate that remediation. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. But again, this was intended to be an update and, and a briefing kind of on where we're at and, and next steps.
Questions from the board. Mr. Muscally, I'll start with you.
Can you identify what those three fields are, Mr. Renshaw, as alternate fields?
Peter, you want to talk real quickly about where we're at? And I think Julia Williams, Tinkham, our Recreation Director, is probably going to help us out with that as well. I know, Peter, can you speak to the three fields that Jeremiah is working on currently?
Yeah, so a couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting with the Falmouth Youth Baseball and Park Superintendent Jeremiah Pearson was in attendance, and he had talked with the coaches about alternate fields, and also that they have a container on the field down, on the lower area of the field to be relocated. The following day, I believe it was the following day or the day after that, our Park Superintendent met with the coaches and talked about the container and also was working with alternative fields. So the three fields that they had talked about was the Moss Pond Field, was one of the fields that they were looking at. The second field that was in discussion was the JV Field, that is at the high school. And the third field is at the Lawrence School. At this time, our Park Superintendent and Park's Department is working with, there's going to be, need to be some improvements to the fields, and there's going to need to be some fencing installed. So our Park Superintendent is working with the fixed fence company to have that, see if we can have that installed and marched, so it'll be ready to go. So those, those three fields should be up and playing.
I assume the school is okay with that as well?
My understanding is our Park Superintendent had conversations with the school superintendent, and the conversation was, make this happen to allow the guests of the fields working for the, the youth baseball.
Go ahead, Mr. Muscally.
One more question. You know, the elephant in the room here is, is an estimate as to how much this is going to cost. I did see on the CPC agenda for the meeting on Thursday, there is going to be some discussion about CPC funding, and I'm just wondering if this type of a project is really appropriate for the use of CPC funding as opposed to being, you know, a town obligation that doesn't require CPC funding to be utilized?
So, we consulted with town council, and the answer, and I'm going to defer to Maura to give her, her opinion, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, town council, but yes, town council believes that we can utilize those funds?
Yes, that's true. I, I did some research, and what I found most helpful was in a guidance release from the Department of Revenue from twenty-nineteen that was a comprehensive overview of the proper use of CPC funds. And in that guidance, it talks about the different asset categories that CPC funds can be used for, and within those asset categories, what specifics the funds can be used for. And for land for recreational use and also for open space, it talks about how funds can be used for rehabilitation. And further defining rehabilitation, it says that the funds can be used for extraordinary repairs. In this context, CPC funds are appropriately used to rehabilitate land and structures both, to make them suitable for their stated purpose, either as recreational land or as open space.
I mean, that's, that's guidance that suggests it's possible. The decision has to come, I assume, from the CPC ultimately.
Correct.
Madam Chair, can I just add to that? So, to your point about, so there's, is it legally permissible? Yes. Is it a good use of CP funds, I guess? And you're absolutely right, that the Community Preservation Committee will make that determination. I would just also point out that I think many of us in the community want to get this done as quickly as possible. And so if the goal is to do it as quickly as possible, we happen to have a two-million-dollar article at town meeting that can get us started. It's not going to be enough for the whole project. We, you know, I believe we're going to get into some numbers, but, you know, that may be closer, closer to half, maybe, maybe a little more than half of the total cost of all the remediation and improvements. So there will be a role, I know the Community Preservation Committee likes to see the town also contribute to these projects, and there will be an opportunity for that as well.
So you would assume this coming up to the floor at town meeting, when there's a discussion on that particular article, depending upon what the CPC...
Right. So we're going to, we're going to go to the Community Preservation Committee and ask if they will allow us to amend the application, which was for, you know, specific identified improvements, and modify that so that we can use it for this remediation as well as get started on some of those improvements.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
And in that same conversation, are they amendable to additional funding for the improvements that we were originally planning to make, right?
Well, that, you know, some of that's going to need to come from general fund, but right, that's part of the, I, I'm assuming the Community Preservation Committee is going to want some of those dollars to come from outside of the Community Preservation Fund. But yes, there may be additional CP funds as well.
Have we identified alternate funds?
We have. We've talked about it internally. We haven't finalized anything yet, but that'll, that will be part of the discussion on Thursday night.
Okay.
Who's Goldstone?
One question about near-term next steps and one, one about kind of the ultimate end goal. You said that, especially with the notification to DEP of additional investigation will be needed, and there may be some additional borings. I'll say, when I look at the, the sketch of, of where the soil has been sampled to date, the sampling is quite distributed across Field One. It's really only along the northern, northeastern edge of Field Two, I think I've got the numbers right, and the samples that are counted as Field Three are mostly at the edges of Fields One and Two. So it, it seems like we don't really have all the information we need to understand the risks on, on those fields. And I appreciate your point that all three should be closed and all three should be remediated, but it feels like more information is, is needed about those. And I guess then the, the other question on the far end of the spectrum is, at least based on what we know about Field One, I think what's being suggested in this report, but just want to confirm, is the sense is that there is a way to remediate these fields to make them truly safe?
Yes, Madam Chair and Select Board, member Goldstone, great points with regards to the dispersment of the pattern of borings, and we had that discussion a couple of weeks ago when we, when we met with Arcadis. You know, the response was, they, they've done some statistical analyses, and they were confident that the location of the borings were representative. But I agree, the first time that we saw kind of the layout of where the borings were taken, the, the staff member from Arcadis that conducted the risk assessment study or analyses made a comment about, based upon the data set that is available, that was a concern of mine as well. So if we punch some additional holes in Fields Two and Three, would that change the, the recommendation? Again, the response was that, you know, they, they did a statistical analysis on, and they were confident that it was representative. There will be some more borings. Likely, it's going to be in that area surrounding Field Two, in the parking lot area. I think there's some concern of that area. The, the, the importance of getting the remediation underway as quickly as possible, so that we can have, we have a plan developed and we can get the, get the work done quickly is important, obviously. And yes, based on discussions that we've had with the LSP and with some of our in-house experts that have, have done projects like this before, we're confident that, that there is a solution. is a solution that will make those fields, all three fields, safe.
Mr. Muscally?
What is the contingency in the event the CPC doesn't approve the amendment or the amendment doesn't pass a town meeting? Where, I'm sure there's some funds that the town can access that would be able to make payment for these services. I mean, there's free cash, isn't there?
So we would need a new town meeting, right? So we, we could look, you know, we could look at borrowing. So there are, you know, potentially other funding mechanisms, but none that would be available in April.
Any other questions or comments?
Having some pretty extensive experience in remediation, you very rarely find good news the more you test. So I think that everybody should be prepared for the fact that hopefully this is as good as it gets, but it might not be. And, and getting after it all at one point is the only way to take care of it.
I would agree with that. Mr. Brown?
The, the one positive is that these fields are at a low level, and so to cap them and elevate them with two or three feet of dirt is at least feasible.
With liners?
Yeah, liners and, and dirt on top, because you've got to have three feet of clean fill on top of the liner, right?
So I know, so Peter, can you, can you respond to that, just in general terms with regards to the, the grade and, and the potential of putting that, the barrier down in the two feet of fill?
Yeah, so, so a typical standard that Mass DEP likes to look at is three feet of soil material over a field, but there are variations that can, that can change that. It's basically the plan of the LSP working with the town, that the LSP is going to come up with a plan that, working with the town, that the town wants. And the LSP, that'll be presented to Mass DEP, and that's the plan that will go forward. What we were looking at is something less than three feet, a geotextile fabric to go over the field, and then another, we're looking at a two feet to go over it, maybe a balancing of the field to be able to, a two feet's a lot of, two feet elevation's a lot of elevation to bring a field up.
Yeah.
Because it comes in, what brings it, comes into effect is the, the light poles, the fences, the dugouts, the sports box, the, the field, so, the, the buildings. So that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. And, you know, I think the light poles, the newly installed light poles, I, I think we do have a, a solution for that. It's going to be something creative, but I think that it'll something that'll work. But, and there is room for, to raise the road and to raise the fields. When you raise a field two feet, you've got to start looking at drainage. We have to make sure that the drainage sheds off the, all three fields. And I just wanted to, you know, reiterate and just hammer home that this is not a one year solution to, for, for the access to be able to use these three additional fields. What our Parks Superintendent is doing right now is he's looking to make these improvements for, for several years. It's, it's going to take more than a year to, to remediate these, these three fields, between getting a contractor in, the bidding process, getting a contractor in, mobilize, demobilize, make the improvements, and also make the improvements for the Phase Two that was going to happen also.
And inspections too take a long time.
Inspection, so it's, it, it, I'd say it's going to be the 25, 26 period, and we should, it should be back in, in 27. But I would say, with what we're talking about right now, in 27, when these fields open, it should be a state of the art. I mean, the, the way we're looking at it is if we're looking at raising the field two feet, we're going to be looking at new dugouts, new defenses replaced, additional lighting, the ADA, bleachers, walls. We want to make sure we take everything into consideration. Because what's going to happen is, the, there's going to be a, once we remediate these fields, there's going to be a plan and a place. So every, anytime somebody has to go and dig in that field and dig below that two-foot barrier, the LSP is going to have to get involved. So we want to make sure that we have everything that we want on that field, so it'll, so it'll take us into the future.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I will take a few public comments.
Susan Augusta, a member of the school committee, as well as a town meeting member from Precinct Nine. Appearing here tonight as a parent and a grandparent. And particularly disturbing is in regards to if any of this was found out last fall, why fall ball was allowed to go on. For the past couple of years, I've been attending games and following the local teams to other towns. The condition of those fields has been horrendous. I've picked up glass. I've seen my son, my son, who has been a coach, picking up glass off of the field prior to the kids playing. And watching my grandson and his friends in conditions of this type is just appalling to me, especially when I go to other towns for tournaments and see what is provided for the children there. So I'm glad to hear Dr. Dorr, the school superintendent, on the day that this was announced that the fields had been closed off, she reached out to Mr. Renshaw, and I can confirm that she's working cooperatively with the DPW as well as town manager, et cetera, in regards to trying to come up with something for the boys and girls ASAP. But as a board, if you can just look at something that can make this all happen yesterday, I would really appreciate it, because two years out of these kids' lives of doing things fun for them, we can't let that not happen.
Thank you. Another comment from the public? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Brandon McCann. I'm a board member of Falmouth Youth Board, Falmouth Youth Baseball. I was actually the person who initiated the initial CPC grant to, for the Field One renovation. So it was very disappointing to see the news come out with the, the status of the fields. But I just wanted to raise the attention that in addition to spring baseball, we also play fall baseball. And the requirement of fall baseball is to have lights. There's no other facility in town that offers lights currently. So this is something to consider. We have over 100 children of the town who play fall ball alone, and this is an opportunity that's not going to be existing for them. So we'll have to send them off to other towns. As a board, in order to do that, we'd have to request permission from our league sponsorship to allow kids to go to other towns. So it has, this has a real snowball effect, so just keep that in consideration of, of your decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I have a question about that, Ms. McCann. Would one field be helpful for fall ball?
Unfortunately, yes, but currently, we have both Field One and Two that have lights, and during fall ball season, which starts approximately mid-September and ends, ends October, mid-October, there's two games going on each night on both fields, Monday through Thursday, potentially Friday as well.
Because, as a contingency, maybe we could consider putting up some netting along the Route 28 there and use the old administration field? It's a pretty good field there that's not being used, but it would need some netting or something.
Good suggestion. Mr. Muscally, did you have a comment?
I was just going to ask, is there any possibility of temporary lighting at one of the locations?
I'd have to defer to someone who knows.
Yeah, I would think the sports lighting that we're talking with, the ones that we installed on, on our field number one, that's muskle lighting, those light poles are about 60 to 70 feet tall. So what you don't want to do is you don't want to have lighting and being in people's faces or when they're on the outfield trying to catch balls, that is, you don't, it can't be too low. It has to be something that's high. So I don't know what would be out there for something like that, but could be an option. We could look at it, but you, you don't want it, it can't be too low. It has to be something higher.
I mean, I'd appreciate looking into it in any event, just to see if there's a, you know, quick fix to allow fall ball.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
I'll take Mr. Oliver, and that'll be it.
Josh Oliver, on the FYB Board, Coach High School Baseball here in Falmouth. Certainly, you know, baseball as, as a whole is a struggling sport, like nationwide. Unfortunately, it's hit pretty hard here, obviously, in the last few years. A lot of the members on this board went through the years of COVID. We kept baseball alive, probably the hardest years of volunteer time any of us ever had to do. I hear all the considerations. I don't disagree. I think you have to, you have to get the fields fixed. However, we've had some small discussions, and, you know, knowing that we have some money allocated from the CPC already, I guess I would ask, is there another site in town that we could consider starting over? And then do the remediation when you need to do it? Rather than remediate, put all this money, invest it, have our kids on hold, can we, is there another facility or another piece of land that the town has that's not being used, not being built upon? Is that something that we could potentially look at?
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Mr. Brown?
Could we add lighting at the Gaspa Complex? Could we add lighting at the Gaspa Complex? I know it's not cheap, but it'd be another, then we'd have two fields for fall ball and...
Gaspa Complex is a regulation-sized baseball field.
That's too big.
It's a big field, yeah. These are, these fields are smaller.
You can't like temporarily modify them? It's just too big, right?
If you open to anything.
Okay.
Certainly, but if we do, I think we really do need at least two fields.
Right.
I think we can get by with two, three's optimal.
Right. Madam Chair, could I just address Coach Oliver's?
Yes, please.
So, so the, the question about, could we consider, I, so we, we have, the town planner has done a pretty extensive, as you all know, evaluation of, of town-owned sites. I'm not, as I'm thinking this through, Coach Oliver, I'm not seeing of those available sites for municipal use without restrictions or any issues. Anything of the size that would, that would lend itself? And then you have topography issues, you know, having a balanced site. I, I think the cost, Coach Oliver, would be, would be prohibitive, something we could certainly explore. You know, right now, our focus is laser-focused on, on, on trying to get these three fields, which has been a significant investment, right, in, in the John Neal complex. Town investment, like I mentioned earlier, the sweat equity and the volunteer efforts on the fields, so a lot of investment. So our focus right now is to try to get those up and running, and like Deputy DPW Director McConner, he said, create a state-of-the-art facility in, in a couple of years, right, once we get the remediation complete and the additional improvements that were planned, unfortunately, with this CPC article funding. Now it's our hope that we can wrap this up and complete the improvements and remediate, make the field safe as quickly as possible. So we'll look into it, Coach Oliver. I just think it's going to be cost prohibitive, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, I'm going to take him, and then you, and then we're going to be done with public comment.
Good morning. I mean, good morning, good afternoon. I feel like morning, I'm asleep. Good evening. My name's Robert Brown, Recreation Committee member for eight years and seven months, which is the exact time I've been pushing a community, trying to push a community preservation project, trying to push the town of Falmouth to do something with Falmouth Youth Baseball Park. And just when I thought we were at the end, it was going to get better. We got $2 million from the community preservation, which I'm, I'm on that committee also. I thought this was the end. We celebrated, we patting each other's on the back, and here we go again. It's very distressful, and I'm thinking about, I, I like what Josh said, you know, maybe we should start over. I know it's a lot of money. And I'm, I'm also thinking, if there was no baseball on this site, would we use community preservation money to clean it up? No, of course not. I don't think we should use community preservation money to clean this up. That $2 million was put aside for the children, handicapped accessibility for spectators, and most importantly, also for safety reasons, okay? Yeah, this is a safety reason now, but I think it'd be sinful to just use community preservation money to clean this up. That's not what I believe the mothers and fathers of community preservation, when they, when they began that general laws, when this town accepted it, that they're going to use money to clean up a toxic waste site. I mean, there must be other money out there, possibly state, federal, I don't know. I don't think anyone's looked yet. It's pretty brand new. But I know there's more reports coming in March, March 12th and 13th, I believe, already in the town meeting packet. I mean, I'd like to see it come back maybe the, the last week, the last town, Select Board meeting in March, after those reports come in, and have a serious discussion regarding the money, have a serious discussion, do we need a special town meeting to get more money to get this done as quick as possible? You know, it's, it's, you know, the children are aging out, they want to play baseball. We hear from the pickleball players all the time, they're aging out, they want to get their courts. And, and they want community preservation money too, and I understand that, and I get that. And I think that we need to really dig deep and get the money now, have a special town meeting after, after the spring town meeting, put our heads together and find the money, if it's cash reserves, if it's borrowing the money. Also, there's a community preservation savings account that they had money for the land bank. They save all kinds of millions and millions of dollars to pay off the land bank debt early. It's sitting in a bank account right now. Have a special town meeting and ask to take one, two, three million out of that. And we just keep on paying the bond like we did before. You know, there's money. It just takes curves to go get it, and we need to go get it as quick as possible, because the children are aging out. They deserve to play baseball. At the baseball fields, you'll see scientists there from, we have coaches from HOE, we have coaches from NBL, we have coaches from the Steamship, we have coaches from the Coast Guard, we have, we have coaches from every trade, every profession that come together and play baseball, and they coach their kids, and, and it's a great place, and it's a lot of fun. And just last Friday, one of our baseball players that played during COVID won the science award at Falmouth Youth, at Falmouth Academy. And, and him and his sister played Little League, and his sister used to win, used to win the prizes also. So every aspect, every economic, every occupational taxpayer, non-taxpayer, renter, owner, whatever, come, come to Falmouth Youth Baseball and, and compete, learn how to win, learn how to lose, like ladies and gentlemen, and this is a good thing. We need to get this thing going as quick as possible. I, I, I'm just dumbfounded by all this. It's pretty sad, but I hope we can, on next, the last meeting you have in March, try and figure this out a little bit more and more. Maybe put this on the agenda each month until, until we get the money. And I think time is the essence.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. One more comment.
Richard Rogers, I just want to go over some numbers. I did the math, there are some loose numbers I went up with, and I went on the lower side just to be safe. So since 1980, if you had three teams in the three divisions that FYB now has, that's 12 kids per team, that's 108 kids per year for 45 years. That's 4,860 kids that have played FYB and have been exposed to this toxic environment. Now let's say on average, each kid has two parents at the game, that's 9,720 Falmouth residents exposed. And let's say on average, each family brings one sibling, usually younger, in the one-to-six-year-old range to those games, and now that's another 4,860 exposed. And according to the report, those kids are at the higher risk. So roughly over the last 45 years, 19,440 just Falmouth residents have been exposed to this toxic environment. Now let's, that's a huge number, right? So let's think about the teams that have come for tournaments that we, I did not put into those numbers. And back in the late 80s, when I played, we had eight to 10 teams in each, in the major divisions, and then the younger kids also. So we're upwards towards 30,000 people that have been exposed over the last 45 years. And let's not even, I saw a skip here, umpires. You figure two umpires a night for five nights a week for eight weeks a year, that's 80 a year times 45 years, that's 3,600 umpires that are now involved. The bigger issue I have is the closure date for Mr. Renshaw. When the press release came out on January 27th, it said, "The town of Falmouth today announced the immediate closure of the John L. Neal Baseball Complex. As most concerned citizens have spent time at the fields, we're worried for our health, but many of the thousands of kids have been exposed." So I emailed Mr. Renshaw on my own to ask when the tests were. In his email, I have it right here, he stated, "The town's consultant performed the initial soil testing on the site December 20th." That goes on to say... That goes on to say, "The results were provided to the town on December 24th," at which at the time was decision to close the field to the public. So many questions, is if the results came back on Christmas Eve, December 24th, why was the public not notified till January 27th? But then in an article in the Cape Cod Times on January 29th, Mr. Renshaw says, "In November, Arcadius was hired to complete 14 test borrowings." So was the testing done in December, as he personally stated in an email to me, or November, as he stated in the Cape Cod Times? In the same article, Mr. Renshaw states, "He initially called for the fields to be closed at the beginning of January pending consultation with the state on January 15th." So was it closed on Christmas Eve, as he stated to me, on, or January 27th? In his press release, or was it January 15th, as he said in the Cape Cod Times article? That's three different dates that Mr. Renshaw said the fields were closed. Something just does not add up. Wait though, on the information page now, on the John Neal, uh, John Neal site on the town website, it says it was closed on January 9th. That's a fourth different day that we got information for. If he can't give us the truth about disclosure and the well-being of our children's sake, how can we believe anything going forward? Now, on Friday, finally, the results were released, and they are more disturbing than we thought. I won't get into the results, as I hope most of us know that they were well above the state limit. In the enterprise article, he states, "In September, the town was first alerted to potentially dangerous materials in the soil." September! Right? So this means the town knew about the potentially dangerous materials in September and didn't test until November or December, I'm not sure, as Mr. Renshaw has given us a few different dates. The bigger concern is that the town knew about this and let the fall ball season still happen, knowingly put kids in harm's way. In 2023, before the spring season, new lights and fencing were put up in replace a failing infrastructure finally at Field One. This means the most toxic soils was disturbed in 2023, but no testing was done until sometime in 2024. After the busiest season, the spring season was still played, we need to know who knew what and when.
Thank you. Is there anything you want to address, Mr. Renshaw?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. Well, I just want to make close with one comment, and I believe that, Mr. Renshaw, when you were alerted to the results of the, of the, um, the testing, that you closed down the fields, and that I don't think anyone can ever fault you for keeping the best interest of our kids and this community. I know it's an inconvenience, um, and I, I applaud your efforts. Okay, we're going to move on to, uh, Town Manager's Supplemental Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I do have, uh, three or four quick reports. Wanted to provide an update, uh, with regards to the, uh, Bad Martha's noise complaints. Um, as you all recall, back on January 27th, we had a, uh, public hearing to discuss possible noise violations. Um, my update, Madam Chair and Select Board, is that I, I have reached out within the past week to the management of Bad Martha's and have a, uh, site visit planned for March 5th to meet with, uh, two managers of the establishment to go over, um, what they've put in place with regards to so, sound mitigation, and then, uh, future plans to even reduce that sound, uh, even further, hopefully. Second update is in regards to Coastal Resiliency Specialists, that recruitment. Um, I'm happy to announce that, uh, the, uh, we have 51 applications for the Coastal Resiliency Specialist position. Just a couple of weeks ago, we had 16. So there's been a lot of increased, uh, attention. Um, and I applaud the Human Resources Department, but the director, Susan Lumping in particular, um, she's gone above and beyond in terms of getting the information out to a broad, um, array of, of different, um, sites and trying to, um, expand, um, the number of applications. We've got, uh, first-round interviews tentatively scheduled for the week of March 3rd. So I'm, uh, hopefully, uh, going to be able to provide an update with regards to hiring, filling that vacancy relatively soon. Um, the position, the preferred date for application, uh, closed today, so again, um, first-round interviews, the week of March 3rd. Um, I'm really excited to announce that our automated agenda management system, the software platform that Town Meeting approved, um, we're close to launching that. Diane Davidson, the office manager, uh, Phyllis Downey, in, in the Select Board Office, and I have been working with the vendor to build the system. Tomorrow, we have training for about 40 staff users. Um, Select Board will get some information too on how to access this new platform, um, but again, it's going to really increase our efficiency and effectiveness, um, reduce, um, a lot of cases with the typographical errors, capitalization and punctuation and whatnot. Um, so excited for rolling that out, hopefully, um, at the March 24th meeting is kind of the goal. Um, the, uh, the other update I wanted to provide is in regards to the comprehensive building condition assessments, um, that initiative. Um, as you all recall, I gave an update, uh, a couple of months ago, we selected a vendor. Um, talking to DPW Facilities Manager Greg Endicott, um, the, uh, the vendor that does the, uh, visual inspections of each of the, uh, town facilities is on, is in town. Um, they're starting this week, today actually, uh, with the school, uh, department, um, evaluating the school facilities. That'll take four to five days. So sometime next week, they'll initiate working with DPW, uh, facilities, evaluating and assessing the town buildings. Um, and ultimately, within the next seven to eight weeks, we're hopeful to have a system built up that again places condition indexes on each of the town-owned buildings and allows us to add that information to the CIP, so we do a better job, um, with the preventative maintenance and identifying needed repairs, um, over that, over our 10-year CIP. Um, so I think ultimately it's going to put us in a much better position, um, than we have been over the years in regards to maintaining our properties, our assets. And that's all I have.
Okay. Select Board Reports. We have our, uh, workshop this weekend.
Yes, we did.
Get ready! Uh, and that will be here at nine o'clock on Saturday. Any other Select Board Reports?
I don't have a report per se, but I just wanted to follow up on an email that I sent about the, the size of the packet, and I'm wondering if there could be a way that we can put some links in rather than the full body? Like, um, I gave one example in my email...
Don't look at me!
I don't have a chance. I'm not, I'm not looking at you.
No, you're looking at me, I'm like, no.
You're sitting in the wrong area.
Yeah, I guess.
So, um, like for instance, um, reports that, like supplemental reports, maybe there could be links.
Like all the information about the habitat for the management.
Yeah, there was a ton of that.
Get through it.
I don't know if that's...
So it's tabbed now, I mean, the PDF that you access on the, on the, uh, on the, on the website, the link that Diane sends out, um, when you, when you pull that up, it's, it's tabbed, so you can go right to the specific agenda item. Um, this new automated agenda management system is actually going to do a better job with tabulating that, but if you, if you go to that link...
I do.
In Adobe, bookmarks is on the right, you hit the Bookmarks tab and it's indexed, you can jump to a different...
You can jump to the different, uh, agenda item numbers, right? And then...
I've never known about that.
What about what we have here?
Is that it?
Let me check on that.
Shut down.
I don't think we have it on, what we get on this.
Shut down to me, tonight here for me also?
I'll verify that. I'll verify, and I think that, well, I know Diane has the version of Adobe that she can tabulate that as well, but I'll, I'll verify that.
What happens, is it, it just closes?
Mm-hmm.
And then you go back to page one, and you have to scroll 600 pages?
That's...
By the time you get done to it?
Not acceptable, so we'll work on that. Yeah, we'll make sure that, uh, that the version that's available on your iPad is tabulated.
I'm not...
I'm sorry, I just wondered if I could take, if you could, and if I could take something out of order, so that I could bring my mother home.
The meeting's over.
What are you here for?
Okay.
Yeah.
It was under this...
Tell me.
...straight of order.
What is it?
And so I wondered why they had to, for donation to the cultural council on, on front porch.
We...
Five hundred dollars.
We had to approve it, and we, and we had to, and we did it, we did take it out of order, we took it before our public hearing. So it was approved with our thank you.
So it has to, it has to go through...
Yes.
Because of the amount.
Yes, because it's a, a donation to the, yes.
Sorry you had to wait.
I'm so...
Thank you so much for the donation.
That was so nice.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Anything over $500?
Anything.
Yep.
Well, I made a donation, $50 to that same thing. I didn't...
Oh, is there...
Where were we?
No, everything was...
Well, thank you, Bob.
Thanks!
I mean, and even, I mean, even, even the notes with respect to it indicated that it was $500 and other donations, so I'm just curious.
Well, that's the minimum, and then...
Furious!
There is no threshold, I'm being told, that any donation has to be accepted formally by the state.
By the town, yeah.
Well, no.
You got under the radar there, Mr. Muscali, but you can make a motion to...
I was going to say, I'm going to scoop Mr. Muscali and mo, make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Would you like to second that, Bob?
Sure, why not?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Hi, it's Brendan from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, our goal as a family-owned company has been simple, to give our neighbors on the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick the perfect appliances for your home. At Crane Appliance, we know how difficult appliance shopping can be. Our team is here for you. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Our email address is carsonprinting@al.com. Carlson Printing, for all your printing needs. John's Liquor Store, 729 Main Street, Falmouth, 508-548-2287.